Motion by Schuster.
Second.
Second by Evans. Any further discussion, questions or comments on those? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carry. Group minutes of intervening. Motion by Brown.
Second.
Second by Fudi. Any further discussion, questions or comments? Seeing none. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carry. Public appearances and citizens comments, is there anybody wishing to speak? But the record show there are none. Communications, I have done, Sean, you have any?
Uh, we do have our Centerfield cinema on Friday. Hopefully our weather is a little better than it is right now. Um, but we are expecting the movie start at Twilight, which we believe is about eight thirty. Um, so that's, that's still looking for volunteers. We need a couple of volunteers just kind of help clean up, help with the concessions and stuff. So if you're interested, please let me know. Um, other than that, that's all I've got.
Next, we have group payment of bills. We have checks for three hundred and five thousand, four hundred and seven dollars and eighty-four cents. Vouchers to two hundred and four thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and sixty-one cents. Electronic transfers, a hundred and seventy-six thousand, four, seven, eighty-eight, six-two. Is there a motion of some payments of bills? Second by, motion by Shanks. Second by Schuster. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Shanks.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Fudi.
Aye.
And some bills have been approved. Next, we have... Reports of officials, proclamation of fair housing month.
City of Juneau proclamation, fair housing month. Whereas August is traditionally designated as fair housing month. And whereas it is important to reaffirm the commitment of the city of Juneau regarding citizens' right to buy, sell, rent, or otherwise secure housing in the city of Juneau without regard to sex, race, religion, marital status, age, national origin, income, or financial status in conformance with Title Eight of the Civil Rights Action of nineteen sixty-eight, AKA the federal fair housing law and the open housing, state open housing law. Now I therefore, Daniel Wagner, Mayor of the city, on behalf of the city of Juneau and its residents, do hereby proclaim August twenty-twenty-one as Fair Housing Month and encourage all housing providers to support and affirm their commitment to fair housing. Needed this tenth day of August twenty-twenty-one. I'm sorry.
Looking for a change here?
It's been a long day. It's normally on the corner of my laptop, but it's on the top corner.
Who is promoting that, Sean?
Uh, it's through our community development block grants.
Alright. Next, we have Resolution Thirty-three, twenty-twenty-one. Approved mayor oil appointments, Board of Appeals. Whereas the mayor has diligently searched for individuals willing to give of themselves by serving on the Board of Appeals Committee. And whereas the mayor wishes to make the following appointments. Tom Schulte, alternate Board of Appeals Committee, expires eight of twenty-twenty-four. Earl Pamper, alternate Board of Appeals Committee, eight twenty-twenty-four. Now therefore be it resolved that the common council, city of Juneau accepts, accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the city of Juneau this tenth day of August twenty-twenty-one. entertain a motion to approve. Some of... Motion by Brown, second by Shanks. Any further discussion? Both Earl and Tom have been on for a few years. Um, we actually found out this year that we were supposed to have two alternates. So we've kind of moved the senior members to the alternate position. So they only get called in for meetings when the regulars can't make it. They were okay with that, so. Any further discussions, questions, or comments? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Shanks.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Fudi.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Resolution Thirty-three, twenty-twenty-one has passed. Next, we have quick treasure. Anything else to report on, Sean?
Um, we did start budgets. Uh, budget, work papers and worksheets haven't turned onto two department heads. Um, those who are chairman of individual committees. Uh, we expect the department heads to bring their budgets to, um, at your September meeting. Um, October is usually when we sit down with the finance, or with department heads and finance committee to make sure everything is balanced.
Any questions? Clear. Seeing none, we'll move on to the written reports. Building permits report, police department report, Juneau fire and rescue report. Any questions on any of those? And Juneau E M S report. No questions, we'll move on to reports committees, commissions and boards, library board. We have no Jeanette.
Um, she didn't send me anything, which is surprising. So I think her absence, um, was not meant to be. But I can kind of point out some things. Uh, new roof is up. Uh, and as Sean had mentioned earlier, we're doing a joint rec department, library department, um, uh, movie in the park. Uh, that is Friday the thirteenth, but it's not playing a horror movie, so no worries. Uh, they're playing Sandlot at eight-thirty and the concessions will have popcorn and water for sale. So come on out.
Anything else report, Paul? Uh, not that I know of. Any questions? Seeing none, moving on, planning commission. Uh, chairman report. He's not here. Basically, we're pretty well caught up on all the things that we had on the agenda. We've been, uh, we did give a, a okay to the gentleman on the corner of twenty-six in Fairfield. Gentleman that's renovating the garage down there. There was some misunderstanding on his fence requirement. We thought that when we put the requirement down, it was going to be a chain link fence. Sometime, some way throughout the conversation that got lost. We're looking for a chain link fence with vision barriers in it because we wanted to make sure that anything that we had in the way of junk or wrecked or used vehicles would be out of sight to the neighboring public. Um, he had already ordered steel, so he's actually doing like a steel or color coordinated with the building. So when he brought all that to our attention that, hey, I'm spending a lot of money on this. I can't abide by what you, what you required from me. Is this going to be okay? So as you see, he's got all post and frame construction down there. He's going to have, uh, still working on trying to come up with some kind of gate that has a vision barrier on it. Uh, he's going to actually have two openings, one to the north and one to the west. A very cordial young gentleman. He's spent a lot of time and money on that building. I think it's a credit to our community, the way it looks. And, um, we weren't happy to give him the green light. But we're kind of following between the several meetings that we had with him prior. And now when it kind of came to push, push got the shove that, hey, when you can get that fence up. We did get, get him to get rid of the, the old semi, um, trailer that he was using to haul his junk. And we had started out with a, a ten-foot height fence that he could use, uh, like these pod trailers for storing old parts and stuff like that. He was cool with that, but our requirement was the fence would have to be higher than the pod. So he came back, yeah, put up a ten-foot fence. So he's been back and forth with planning commission several times. And, uh, he's always been compliant with anything we've asked him, and so. Think he's going to be a good name. You know, like I said, trust us and extend the building.
A lot of big homework for them.
But anyway, that's the extent of that. So, um, I guess, uh, moving on then.
About resolution there?
Resolution we've got tonight is for two welcome signs for the city of Juneau.
Okay, boss.
Dave wasn't here. Auto Pet or Whisker, as they're known. Oh, you were. I'm already on here. So the ones that didn't, probably Richard and, Richard and Jean. I guess this went through, through finance committee as well as, uh, plan commission. Auto Pet would like to construct two very nice signs at the Highway Twenty-six North and the Highway Twenty-six South entrances. At no cost to the city of Juneau. We've got a very meager advertisement on there, home of the litter robot with kind of a backlit cat. You can see walking through the, through the, the background. But, uh, yeah, it's, uh, no cost to us. As you can see, that's a land and stone constructed. Got almost a house basement underneath it, built and sported all and what have you. So they came forward and asked about this and I brought it to finance committee's attention. And it's not going to cost us anything. I do have to shore up their agreement. I guess I'll be asking for Andrew's advice on that. Uh, Highway Twenty-six North, that was the PCA, production credit building at the time. That the signs were relocated from the west side of Highway Twenty-six to the east side of Twenty-six. That was just kind of a gentleman's agreement that, you know, we could put them up there.
Okay.
Wayne Storm Road from Archie Monuments. He now owns that building there. I do have a call in form. He hasn't returned my call yet. I don't think there's going to be an issue.
But I think we should have like a ninety-nine yearly lease or something like that.
We should definitely have a written agreement on this. These are, these signs are to the two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars apiece. So, you know, we do want to make the option. We do want to make sure that, uh...
That's not longer?
The stone is eighteen foot long.
Even the roof is stone. Yeah, so. So it's a very nice, very nice gesture on their part. Um, they were so cordial, you know, they wanted to put up the totem poles for the other organizations and said that they would like those as well. And I guess, so I guess we just took it from finance right to the council. I asked them what their timeframe was on this and they said we can do it anytime. We're ready to go. That was the answer I got, so.
So will this be replacing the sign that we got?
The two, the northern.
In the same place?
Yeah. I want to make sure that that thing fits properly in, though, by the school though before it was forwarded. And I'm sure we'll have some discussion on that with that.
I don't know how you'd say no to those. They look really professional.
You can read the resolution, Paul.
Alright, Resolution Thirty-four, twenty-twenty-one. Approve two welcome signs for the city of Juneau. Whereas the city of Juneau, Wisconsin, has presented, has presented with, was presented with a concept of two proposed welcome signs. And whereas Auto Pet Care will provide at no cost to the city, two welcome signs situated at the north and south ends of the city, of the city on Highway Twenty-six to welcome traffic into Juneau. And whereas the planning commission recommends approving acceptance of the two welcome signs for the city of Juneau. Now therefore be it resolved that the common council of the city of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the city of Juneau this tenth day of August twenty-twenty-one. I will move for passage of Resolution Thirty-four, twenty-twenty-one.
Second. Motion by Shanks, second by Fudi. Any further discussion?
I think it's smart.
Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Shanks.
Aye.
Fudi.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Resolution Thirty-four, twenty-twenty-one has passed. Other than that, on planning commission, besides working with them, we're still on property maintenance issues. We do have quite a few properties that need some, some nudging along to finish projects and what have you. I don't have to name them off. I'm sure you're all aware of them. They're pretty evident around town. So we kind of keep our police chief and the building inspector involved with that stuff. Hopefully we get some of those things finished up throughout the season. I think, you know, last year it was COVID. Nobody could do anything during COVID. We'll stand on top of that, which the planning commission always does. No other questions for planning commission? We'll move on to finance committee, Cheryl.
We did meet. And a couple of items, um, that we had to take care of, um, that moved to us. We had approved some air packs for the fire department. And, um, they did some research and found that the funds that we had designated for that within our, our monies available to them came in at a higher price. Um, it is required that they be compliant with the state requirement. So they came back and asked for additional funds. And those funds will be coming out of their fire equipment contingency fund. We also discussed the creation of a special revenue fund, um, for the monies that we received in relation to COVID, um, and getting back on track for, for the community as a whole. We have not decided what those funds will be used for. But we don't want them to affect our, um, other monies that, that we get, our shared revenue funds to come in. So we need to set them up as a separate entity so they don't affect that rather than sitting in our general fund money. And then we talked about the North Street resurfacing bid. Um, we did have some, a couple of people that bid for that and we will be bringing that up. We looked at our financial statements as of June thirtieth. The city is in good standing. Um, our department heads are doing a good job of staying within budget. And we ask that they continue to stay within budget and we continue to work forward. And we will be working on our, um, budget calendar coming up. Um, the finance will become very busy here in the next couple of months and we will be having additional meetings. So, um, we will try and work with everyone scheduled to get those taken care of. We did have a couple of new things that will be coming on to our, um, next meeting. We did have an inspection of our community center and have some things that will need to be brought forward from there. No action was taken on them. They were not actionable items, just brought on our new business. First resolution is Resolution Thirty-five, twenty-twenty-one. Approve using additional funds from Fire Equipment Contingency Fund to purchase air packs. Whereas the finance committee has reviewed a request from the fire department to use the Fire Equipment Contingency Fund to cover the additional cost of air packs. And whereas the fire department presented quotes for air packs that were approved by the common council for purchase in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars. Prices have increased since the last time when they were quoted out. And whereas the fire department has received a new quote in the amount of a hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and four dollars from Jefferson Fire and Safety as seen in, in Exhibit A, leaving additional three, thirty-five thousand, six hundred and four dollars even needed for the purchase. And whereas the finance committee recommends using the Fire Equipment Contingency Fund to complete the purchase of the air packs as quoted. Now therefore be it resolved that the common council of the city of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the city of Juneau this tenth day of August twenty-twenty-one. I move for passage of Resolution Thirty-five, twenty-twenty-one.
Motion by Brown, second by Shanks, further discussion?
The two quotes that they brought, um, one of them was a kind of an à la carte. You picked what you wanted and you paid for each one individually. Um, the other one was, had some other things combined. The batteries were one of the biggest things. The one, you have to buy individ, their batteries. The other ones are a common battery you can buy at Walmart. So, um, that's huge in the process of looking at replacing parts. But we do want to be compliant with what's required by the state.
Yeah, this is also an unfunded mandate. They hand this down to us, we don't have any choice. When they say our equipment is at such and such a point in life, we have to retire it and buy a new. And, um, we've done all kinds of upgrades, put on these face masks and air packs that we presently don't have, that we will have. So this is the latest of greatest for a period of time until they decide the next, next problem has to be retired, so.
How much remains in the contingency fund?
Uh, for the fires, I believe we're at a hundred and three thousand right now, so it brings it down to seventy-seven.
We did ask, um, Richard, if they could do it in increments. So, you know, a few here, a few here, a few here. But the mandate is such that it's good for now. And in ten years, they may change it and everything has to change at that point in time. So if we were to stage it out, some of them might only be good for two or three years. So buying would be done.
They say they're like twenty-two thousand, the other quarter.
Correct.
Well, there's other things that the other quarter didn't say as well that, um, the chief engineer brought to our attention of that he would have to mod certain things for the other ones as they're completely different. Where these ones are here.
Pretty much.
Yeah, yeah. And these ones are very similar, they can use the same brackets. So there's other things that warranty included. If they were to get what that warranty was supposed to, it was an upper.
Or he's a fit original rack, that's what he had.
Yeah, it's important. No other questions? Call the question. Oh, roll call vote, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Shanks.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Fudi.
Aye.
Schuster.
Upstate.
Resolution Thirty-five, twenty-twenty-one has passed.
Resolution Thirty-six, twenty-twenty-one. Approve creating a new special revenue ARPA fund. Whereas the finance committee has reviewed the need to create a new special revenue fund titled ARPA. And whereas ARPA funds need to go into their own special revenue fund so it does not affect future shared revenues from the state. Whereas the finance committee recommends to approve creating a special revenue fund titled ARPA. Now therefore be it resolved that the common council of the city of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the city of Juneau this tenth day of August twenty-twenty-one. I move for passage of Resolution Thirty-six, twenty-twenty-one.
Motion by Brown, second by Schuster. Further discussion? Sean, you want to walk us through this?
So these are the funds basically from the federal government that we received due to COVID. Um, this is, I believe, I think we currently receive about roughly a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Uh, this is used for certain circum, certain situations due to, that came up because of COVID. Um, these funds need to be separated from our general fund because it can affect our shared revenue and expenditure, expenditure, expenditure restraints money. Uh, because basically expenditure restraint is based off your budget. You can't increase your budget more than a certain percentage year over year. So if we were to throw these funds into the general fund, spend it, that would increase our budget and automatically take us out of that expenditure restraint possibility. So this is putting it into a separate, completely separate fund. It's not a separate checking account. It is, but it's not. It's, but it's, but separate fund where it's easier to track what you spent your money on as well, so.
Does it have to be spent within a certain time period?
Uh, by the end of twenty-twenty-four, it has to be earmarked.
Designated?
Yeah, designated.
Is that just for equipment or is it for, um, payroll, for people that have the...
There's several different options. Um, there's lost revenue, there's, um, hazardous pay to public safety employees. There's infrastructure, there's situations that we are paying for due to the COVID virus and stuff like that. So there's four or five different generic columns or stuff that hit through.
Paid when people receive COVID pay?
Uh, it would not, it would, it does not cover that. It would only cover additional hazard pay up to thirteen dollars an hour, so.
A lot of the townships are using it to expand broadband. But that's a bigger issue in the townships typically, but that's what they're doing a lot of. Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Fudi.
Aye.
Shanks.
Aye.
Resolution Thirty-six, twenty-twenty-one has passed.
Resolution Thirty-seven, twenty-twenty-one. Award construction bid for North Street resurfacing project. Whereas the city of Juneau, Wisconsin, did advertise and receive sealed bids for the twenty-twenty-one North Street resurfacing project. And whereas two bids were received and is on file with, with the city engineer as shown in Exhibit A and summarized below. Northeast asphalt, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, twenty-eight dollars. Wolf paving, a hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. Whereas the accepted bid was higher than the hundred and fifteen thousand dollars budgeted, the additional monies in the bid are mainly for contingency items that may arise in the project and is suggested use capital projects funds for any additional cost. Whereas the finance committee recommends awarding the bid to Northeast Asphalt in the amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty-six thousand, twenty-eight dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that the common council of the city of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the city of Juneau this tenth day of August twenty-twenty-one. I move for passage of Resolution Thirty-seven, twenty-twenty-one.
Motion by Brown. Second by Shanks. Further discussion? I think I'm going to turn this over to our contracted engineer, Jason Lau of MSA. Do you want to kind of give the, the council the rundown like you gave the finance committee on what these contingency items might entail and why they're important to have it incorporated into a bid versus going time of material on those kind of?
Yeah, right. So as, um, as indicated, there are a couple of contingency items for this mill and overlay work. And primarily what that is, if you can all imagine, as the, um, existing asphalt is pulverized and, and removed from the site, we, we would, we want to check to make sure that that sub base and sub grade material below the street is still in good working order and that there's not any other soft spots that may be, you know, um, leading to some of the cracking and whatnot that may be seen in the, in the asphalt out there. So once that, um, existing asphalt is pulverized, before the contractor begins paving operations, um, we would bring a, a loaded dump truck onsite and, and check that sub base material, make sure that everything's sound. And so if, um, if everything holds up fine or whatever, we wouldn't need to use these contingency items. But if there are some soft spots found, um, the Scott Carpenter, the city, uh, DPW, as well as our staff would be onsite to, um, guide the contractor on how we would want to deal with those, um, items or those problematic areas. And the main, the main way we would do that is by removing the existing roadway gravel base, um, over excavating the bottom sub grade out and putting in some additional breaker run material in there to kind of shore those soft spot areas up. And so that's what these contingency items are, is to do that over excavation of the sub grade if it's necessary. Um, as we discussed with the finance committee, if that underlying sub, sub base is in good working order and we have no need to do any additional, um, EBS or, or excavation below sub grade, then the city wouldn't pay tho, that, those additional contingency items. And, and they would see, um, the project come in fairly close to the budgeted, the original budgeted amount. So. Any, any other questions or?
I guess, uh, you kind of answered it. You're going to assist us as far as viewing and inspecting it after the asphalt has been removed. And Jason was involved in the bidding process and what have you. Or MSA was involved in the bidding process. That's their involvement. And it's just better to have somebody like MSA fronting this stuff. We wouldn't have looked for these contingency items to be included in our bid. We would have bid it out, you know? And then all of a sudden, surprise, surprise. And I reminded the finance committee, you know, they don't call that area that those three streets are involved in this project Frog Hollow for anything. So, you know, there's a reason for that. That's a kind of a, a high water table down there. So there might be a good chance that we might be using these contingencies. So it's better to have them in place and be covered than get on the hook for a lot of additional charges later on.
Yep, and in this way we have the, the contractor's unit price for that locked in or whatever. Whereas if it, if it comes up during construction, you know, then, you know, we're, we're kind of at their mercy to charge us whatever they want. So at least this way, we kind of at least have it kind of worked into the project. And again, it's going to be up to the existing field conditions to see whether or not we need to use them, so.
Any questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Shanks.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Fudi.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Resolution Thirty-seven, twenty-twenty-one has passed.
This next resolution that we have here, um, Jason is going to do some more sharing with us shortly on this. Um, we had a discussion at our utility commission in regards to the road project that we're doing on Highland Street and East Oak Street and what we were looking at doing and some of the requirements from the DNR and requirements to get rid of lead services to homes um, from the street out to the main box, um, anything that is city owned, anything that is, um, homeowner owned, that we need to take care of that. Um, the DNR is coming down hard and fast with those rules and we don't have much opportunity. Our deadline has, is approaching much more quickly than we want it to. Um, it creates, um, problems for everyone in regards to our water treatment plant. We need to get some other, other, um, chemicals to put in to take care of corrosiveness in the... other chemicals to put in to take care of corrosiveness in the water, um, treating for lead as it comes through. So, the dynamic here is we looked at this project at Utility and said, if we can do it all at one time, we're going to recommend to council that we do it all at one time. So, we would do the Highland Street, the East Oak Street, and then extending it to Fair Street on East Oak Street. So, I will read this resolution, put it on the floor. We can have discussion on it from there. Resolution thirty-eight, twenty twenty-one, approve amending the agreement with MSA for the Highland Street and East Oak Street project, extending the reconstruction to Fair Street. Whereas the Common Council has reviewed and amended agreement with MSA to provide the engineering design, bidding-related services, construction administration services, excuse me, and construction observation services for reconstruction of Highland Street and East Oak Street, with the addition of extending the reconstruction to Fair Street, reconstruction of the existing street to include new storm sewer, water main line, curb gutter, sidewalk, driveway aprons, street pavement, and all related work. And whereas the Common Council recommends approving the agreement with MSA for a hundred and fifty-four thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars in professional services is shown in Exhibit A, now therefore be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the Common Council of the City of Juneau this tenth day of August twenty twenty-one. I move for passage of Resolution thirty-eight, twenty twenty-one.
Motion by Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Foodie. Further discussion. I'm thinking that we've definitely got a volume discount from MSA, right, for expanding the project here. So, we're really looking out for two entities here. We're looking out for the, the private individual, private property owner that butts this project to be able to get some funding that's out there for replacement of lead. And in order for them to replace their lead water services, we have to have lead-free services coming off the main line to their stop box continuing on to their property. So, as Cheryl alluded to, that we are fighting a timeline. Those funds are only going to be available for a certain amount of time, and we've also went on record as hiring MSA to administer that, that part of the project as well as far as initiating the, the lead replacement and what have you. So, I'll turn it over to Jason to hit all the highlights on all this. It's really something that the Finance Committee thought and the Utility Commission thought it'd be good to tackle this all at once when we do have available funds and that there are other avenues of finance and and grant monies out there for the property owners. Yep.
Yeah, so just to recap a little bit, uh, so the original project area that was bid out this year, but um, the, the bid was rejected, and we're now looking at that extending into the twenty twenty-two construction season would be uh the two blocks of Highland Street from center down to East Oak Grove Street, as well as the one block of Oak Street from the Depot Street intersection to Highland. And now, um, as mentioned, we're now looking to expand the project further to include these additional blocks of Oak Street. Um, the first block being on the eastern side of the original project area from the Highland Street intersection to the eastern dead end. And then also, um, two blocks of Oak Street west of the original project area from the Depot Street intersection to Fair Street. So, essentially, we'd be doing two blocks along Highland from east or from Center Street down to East Oak Grove, and we would be doing four blocks along Oak Street from the Fair Street intersection to the eastern dead end altogether if, if, uh, if we move ahead with this. And so, as alluded to, um, these additional three blocks have, are believed to have a, a high concentration of lead services that, again, we're trying to push um to get replaced as soon as possible to try to stay in compliance with this mandate from the DNR. These blocks also have old sanitary sewer that's also contributing to the city's INI issues. Um, there's old undersized water main that also needs to be replaced and will benefit um those blocks not only from a, from a, a water, um, a domestic water use perspective, but also for a fire protection standpoint. Um, and then, and then some of you may also be aware of, of some of the drainage issues that are also along those sections of Oak Street that also would be addressed along with this project, not only um or in addition to also just the replacement of the, of the old um roadway infrastructure that's out there. So, those are the, those are the main highlights of the things that we're trying to tackle with these projects. Um, but again, the, the main driver of trying to get these done is, is to not only try to meet as, as much of the DNR mandate with these lead services as possible, but of also trying to capitalize on the lead service replacement money that the city has available right now to take care of some of these and and help, help with the, the cost burden or whatever to the property owners for the replacement of those lead services on their side of the property. Um, because for some of those folks, that can be, it can be, um, you know, a larger expense. And so, um, we, as mentioned, whatever, we've, we've discussed this both at the Utility Commission and at the Finance Committee. We, we have talked about um some, some grant funding options that may be available to the city. Uh, again, as everyone probably knows, with the original project area of Highland Street, we did um already secure CDVG closed funds in the amount of seven hundred thousand dollars to pay for a, a portion of that project. And we're also in discussions with the city staff on, on some other uh funding options, either grants or loan interest loan programs, whatever, that the city may pursue to help pay for these additional blocks. But that, um, the, the, that work is still kind of underway and, uh, and we need to do a little bit more research and, and potentially some, um, some incomes, income surveys for the residents that live along there to see what, what we may qualify um for as far as grants and things like that go. So, there'll be more to come on that, but um I guess that's kind of a summary of, of where we're at at this point and, and why we're pushing to expand the project to include these three additional blocks of Oak Street.
Want to touch upon expanding the project, what that may do for us as far as bidders?
Oh, yes. Um, yeah. Obviously, um, again, backtracking to the Highland Street project um and the bids that we did receive on that, we only had one bid this year. Um, and it was, it was bid a little bit later in the season than typical, so a lot of the contractors this year were already filled up with work and, and weren't really interested in the project, it seemed like. And so, by, by postponing that project and, and also expanding it to a larger-sized project, whatever, we're hoping to capture three things. One is to bid it at more of the, the prime time, which is going to be in like December or January, when a lot of the contractors are trying to build their workload for the next year. Um, with that, we are, we're hoping to get more than just one bidder, obviously, and then that will also lead to more competitive pricing, we're hoping. And then also, we have, with a larger project, we hope to have the economy of scale going, working for us too, to help aid in, in the, in some more competitive pricing with the project. So, and that'll hopefully bring things closer, if not under, under what we're budgeting at this point and, um, and allow the city to uh replace this infrastructure that's in need of replacement. So.
Very good. Thank you.
The other question I had is you talked about income survey for um this project too. The whole project will be included in that income survey to hopefully qualify all of them?
No. So, um, this past year, whatever, um, with, with the, with the original Highland Street project, the city went ahead and are, and did income surveys along that stretch because we needed to do that in order to get the CDVG closed funds. At the same time, the city also took the liberty of, of doing the income surveys for the eastern block of Oak Street from Highland to the dead end. And, and we found that that block, at least at this point in time, did not qualify for, um, and meet the income limits that we needed to. And just in that short period of time, there hasn't been a lot of people that have really, you know, moved out of that area or, or that they likely changed their, their incomes or their jobs or whatever where that, where that outcome wouldn't, would have changed. But we, um, but one thing that we are looking at is doing some income surveys for the, the western two blocks of Oak Street, which was, which wasn't done before, whatever, to see if there's any opportunities there that we may capture on.
So, basically, you've hit the whole project though, the income surveys?
Yes. Well, we, we will after we've, after we do these last two blocks on the western, the western two blocks, whatever, from Fair Street to Depot Street.
Good question. Anybody else? Seeing none? Roll call vote please.
Brown.
Aye.
Foodie.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Shanks.
Aye.
Resolution thirty-eight, twenty twenty-one has passed. Anything else, Cheryl?
I believe that is all that I have.
Thank you. Personnel Committee, Paul?
Uh, we did not meet.
Public Safety.
We just had a meeting. Um, Chief Beal introduced Jennifer Dominic. She's replacing Kathy Ferrari when she retires. Um, Jennifer is a good fit for the City of Juneau. She has a five years of, of law enforcement education and is well dispatcher, and she did some social work. So, she's a good fit for the city. And also, the Chief Beal said there's, they put a current, and the utility builders are flying here. They're looking for uh crossing guards for the City of Juneau. It's a half hour in the morning and a half hour in the afternoon. If anybody's interested, they should get a hold of the city. They had a national night out on August third. It's pretty well, quite a few people showed up to that. Uh, different departments were down there, Public Works, Library, Recreation, Junior Utility, and Fire EMS Departments. Had a bunch of stuff going on down there. Uh, the nine eleven parade, starting at eight PM on nine eleven, Saturday night this year. Chief Menman stated that this is the twentieth year since the attack, and they're trying to get four hundred and eleven marchers. It will include citizens, firefighters, firefighter wives, family, and friends. So, anybody interested, get a hold of the Fire Department. The number four eleven is the number of people who died in the nine eleven attacks. So, they're trying to get a lot of people to march that night. Usually, it's well, well attended. We've done it every year, so. Uh, Dan Zane passed out the EMS report, total of twenty-six calls in May compared to thirty-four calls last, last May, twenty twenty. They discussed coverage. Uh, like I say, they're short on personnel, and so is Orican, so I got a resolution. Uh, Juneau and Orican are going to work together if they're short on EMTs to help each other out. Fire G hand out his report, twelve calls in uh May and June. He also mentioned that the Fire Department is looking for members. If anybody's interested, the average age for the department is around fifty-five years old, so they're definitely looking for younger people. If anybody is interested, join the Fire Department. Everybody is shortage of manpower around. And with that, I will read the resolution. Resolution thirty-nine, twenty twenty-one, approve coverage agreement with City of Orican EMS. Whereas the Public Safety Committee has reviewed an agreement between the City of Juneau and the City of Orican to provide paramedic services. When we're on these two agencies, we're short on manpower. And whereas the Public Safety Committee recommends to approve the coverage agreement with Orican as shown in Exhibit A. Now therefore be resolved that the Common Council of the City of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the Common Council of the City of Juneau this tenth day of August twenty twenty-one. I move for passage of Resolution thirty-nine, twenty twenty-one.
Motion by Schuster, second by Brown. Further discussion. I think Juneau and Orican are in very similar situations where daytime coverage is very tough for, for both ambulance services. And I'm happy to see Orican and Juneau kind of working together. Um, there's no cost exchanged. They call on each other, unlike when Eberdam has called for intercept or whatever, even if they don't actually perform, we get charged for the calls. So, so this is a much better arrangement for comparable EMSs and um, as I hear the, the pager going off all day long, they're
Today they're busy.
They're helping each other. There's no two ways about it, you know? They're out on a call, they're asking Juneau to cover. Juneau's out on a call, we're asking Orican to cover. Only four miles apart, so you know, it just makes good sense to, you know, it's only for better patient care by, you know, by approving something like this and going along with it. And like I said, for many years, goes back to forty-plus years that I've been on the Fire Department, um, there was not a working relationship for some reason between Juneau and Orican. And I will say, the present people in charge are now working to mend that fence and work cooperatively together and create something like this. So, I'm happy to see that. Any other questions? Roll call vote please.
Schuster.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Foodie.
Aye.
Shanks.
Aye.
Resolution thirty-nine, twenty twenty-one has passed. Anything else, Cheryl? You want to add?
Um, there was a letter from a resident regarding truck traffic on East Center coming into town. It uh, it's got a lot of noise and vibration when they hit the manhole covers. So, I guess we actually sent that on to Utility. We're going to check the manhole and make sure that underneath there is not broken or up or something. So, I guess we're going to look into that a little bit.
Utility and DPW are working together to make sure that the
Make sure nothing's broke underneath there.
The chimneys on the, on the risers, on the sanitary sewer, catch basins and what have you, are, manhole structures are, are not being damaged. We've got a lot of truck traffic from the, from the plant out that way that comes through town. And I guess short of asking them to reroute their, their trucks, there's really nothing we can do about it when you've got a county, county road addressing your city streets. You gotta let them through, I guess.
You can't tell them not to come through.
So, you set up a toll booth or something like that, but I don't think that's going to work. But uh, yeah, they, um, there is a lot of traffic and uh, there was, there was some concern about, you know, whether the infrastructure was being damaged underground. I highly doubt it anyway. Just to appease the party, we're going to investigate. Take it from there. Anything else?
That's all I got.
Um, the nine one one parade, I think it's going to be special this year. It's going to be on a Saturday night, so.
Yep, for the twentieth year.
I'm hoping anybody that can will participate and what have you.
They do good. They put flags along the route, and a lot of people are out there with candles and everything else. It's a very, very nice parade.
Firefighter Dan Yonkey does a very good job in promoting this. He contacts just about every, every department, well, he contacts every department within the county and even outs- even outside the county. He contacts someone from what have you. So, we're looking for a good turnout.
Yep. It's a silent parade. It's just the lights around the fire trucks. And I said, I mean, there's no horns going or nothing like that. It's real quiet and a very nice parade.
Got a lot of good comments from outsiders that have witnessed it for the first time. Moving on to Public Works. It was in here, we did not have a meeting. Cable TV, Jane?
No meeting, no report.
CBA, no meeting, no report. Recreation?
We did not meet. However, we are doing interviews for the new director position. Uh, we have a small committee that we interviewed individuals uh on Friday and also yesterday. Um, and we have called a select few of those individual, individuals back to do follow-up meetings uh during our normal August Wednesday meeting on the eighteenth. So, we'll hopefully be able to offer one of them a, a job, and if accepted, hopefully they'll be able to start after Labor Day. It's kind of our timeline of events.
Questions?
Have a good time agree if I'm in it too.
Well, it'll be, it'll be nice because we, we already have all our fall programs in place. Um, Gail Amsler is offered to stay on as long as needed, uh, part-time to uh work with uh the new director we hired. So, there's not going to be someone who's going under the bus. We'll actually have someone who's been here for twenty-seven years uh to help them, um, you know, kind of figure out things and learn things. And uh, the best part about that is they'll be able to come in at the beginning of the budget season, so they'll be able to work all the way through the budget season this fall and have, you know, a good idea of what they're doing with the help, the board and with Gail as well. So.
So, hopefully somebody that's receptive of, of Gail's running maybe, though.
Yeah, we have, we have some really good candidates. I'm really excited for our Wednesday eighteenth meeting because, um, you know, the interviews lasted significantly longer than what I would anticipate, and that just means they're really good interviews and we're having a really good conversation with those individuals. So, yep.
Anything else?
Uh, nope.
Utility Commissioner report.
We had a meeting. As always. Tom Henryann from WPPI gave a presentation to the commission. He explained the benefits provided to members, including the stable power costs. He reviewed the five-year business plan, which includes a target of a forty-five percent carbon-free emissions by twenty twenty-five. And it continued to advocate for, uh, for its members at the state and federal level. Jason was at our meeting, and I'll, that's been beat to death tonight. But Jason is getting around all the people, it seems like. So, that's good. Um, Nick Galman reported that he has been working with uh Jason and MSA, and the conversion of the overhead lines to underground on Highland Street will start in a few weeks. You may have seen an article in the Daily Citizen on July twenty-second that referenced the Juneau Utility Juneau Utility Commission in a negative way. And Nick, Nick explained that there was a low voltage situation at the county jail that they responded to and resolved in fifteen minutes. Apparently, a couple county board members cited Juneau Utilities as causing electrical issues that were unrelated to the power supply issue. Nick talked with Russ Fravor and Jim Milkie at the county and explained to them that the utility was not at fault and that it's, that it's the customer's responsibility to provide circuit protection for their equipment. The commission approved hiring American Leak Detection to check the city water system for leaks. They'll do the whole city this year, and then in the future, we'll do twenty-five percent of the city at a time each year. The commission approved assigning the wastewater, water superintendent job to Peter Galoon. And Lori Runyon was taken off probation. Work continues on the Sensient contract. The draft has been completed and reviewed by the city attorney. And the opening for the wa- water wastewater treatment operator position has been posted internally for five days and was placed on public sites last Tuesday.
Resolution.
Oh, I got a resolution?
Yeah.
Guess I got a resolution.
Resolution forty, twenty twenty-one, approve hiring Peter Galoon wastewater superintendent. Whereas the utility commission has posted internally and externally for a wastewater superintendent. And whereas the utility commission recommends hiring Peter Galoon at a rate of thirty dollars and sixty-six cents per hour with a one-year probation period and review after six months effective August eighth, twenty twenty-one. And whereas the utility commission further recommends that a background check, physical, and drug screen will be waived as Peter Galoon is a current City of Juneau employee. Now therefore be it resolved that the common council of the City of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the City of Juneau this tenth day of August twenty twenty-one. I move for passage of resolution forty, twenty twenty-one.
Senator?
Motion by Evans, second by Foody. Further discussion? We did meet with Peter last night and came to this agreement. Thus far, in the utility's opinion, he's been holding down the fort pretty well. He openly admits that there's a lot that he has to learn about our collection and distribution system as far as water and sewer. He's more trained in the sewage treatment process than, than that kind of stuff. But he asked good questions and we think he's got a future here. And he seems to be, be very happy in, in leading the group. We're looking to hire a fourth, fourth member out there. We did have, we went on record as offering her an interview. So, yeah, things seem to be running as best as they can. Peter seems to be calling in help when he needs help and what have you. So like I said, this looks like a lot of money per hour, but it really isn't. If you scan the neighboring superintendent's costs, this rate is about normal for an operator with all the credentials that you need to be able to work with the treatment plan. So this gives him some room for growth. I kind of put it on the table. I said, we're not starting you at the top. We want you to be able to grow into this position and have some room to expand your salary over the years. So he understood that and welcomed the challenge and encouraged him to move to Juneau. Because I don't like going out on those night time calls when somebody's not around. But anyway, yeah, I think he's, I think he's going to succeed. So. Any other questions? Cheryl, you got anything to add?
I've been very pleased with his leadership out there and the cohesiveness of the group of people that are serving at our wastewater utility. It came as a, as a big change to them, but they have, they've stood up to the test. And I'm incredibly proud of all of them out there. It's not that easy.
I think they're all contributing.
Yes, they are.
I think that's the big thing. Their opinions are all valued by Peter. He's not just running this by himself. He looks for input. We have a young lady that, that is very capable of the lab work out there. In fact, that's kind of her four K. And she's very outspoken, but like I said, she's, she's very educated and seems to, seems to have control of what she's doing out there and what have you. And if they all work together, I think they could get the job done. No other questions? I'll call the question and we'll call, vote, please.
Evans.
Aye.
Foody.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Chanks.
Aye.
Resolution forty, twenty twenty-one has passed. Anything else, Dick, or Cheryl?
Should always have the don't flush wipes.
That is true. Still, do not, do not flush flushable wipes. They do not work well in our system. We continue to have issues. So, thank you. If you want your toilet to flush and you want it to work correctly, not back up in your basement, don't put flushable wipes in the toilet. Put them in the trash can.
Good point. Even though they say they're flushable. Okay, any old business tonight? New business? Next, we have approved provisional bartender's license for forty-five days. We have none. We have approved regular bartender's licenses for twenty twenty-one expires June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Recommended approval for Jeremy L. Mason. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Chanks, second by Schuster. Any further discussion? Say none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. No other business, another motion to adjourn? Motion by Brown, second by Chanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. This meeting is closed.